All right, welcome, everybody. Please rise to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So as always, we start the evening with some announcements. First is join us at the Heritage Cultural Center on Veterans Day. That's tomorrow, November 11th, from 10:00 a.m. till noon for a light breakfast and coffee to enjoy while looking at historic displays honoring those who served. Also note that Winterfest will take place on December 6th from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. here at Town Hall. Please, if you can, come out and there's more information on our website. Any other announcements by anyone else in town?
I want to thank the Heritage Cultural Center for the great gala that was put on two Saturday, a couple Saturdays ago. Really nice time, and it's always wonderful to see so many people in our community give so much back to the town.
Thank you, Trish. Okay, at this time, we will take public comment on agenda items. Please come forward. State your name.
I'm Kellyando. I sent an email to all of the council members in this for Schwend, and I would just like to read it for the record. I'll probably read quickly to make sure I get in. A revision of the town's policies on citizen appointments to authorities, boards, commissions, and advisory committees is on the agenda to be considered for revision of the 2018 policy. While I appreciate and endorse that all policies need to be reviewed from time to time and revised as appropriate, in my opinion, some of the proposed changes do not encompass the best practices for selecting the best available candidates for these positions. Approximately seven to eight years ago, a group of residents petitioned council to adopt a more open, transparent process concerning the application and appointment of members to these volunteer entities. Among other things, such policy revisions would give more citizens a reasonable opportunity to participate in our town government. I know this occurred because I was one of those individuals. At that time, while not all of our suggestions were incorporated into the selection process, council did make significant changes, thereby opening these positions to a larger pool of candidates. In my opinion, the new policy in 2018 made each of the authorities, et cetera, more robust and effective, which in turn has benefited our community. Prior to the 2018 changes, the application and appointment process was closed and in many ways secretive. Certainly, it did not promote recruitment of a wider segment of our population. Such a process did not give new and talented voices a meaningful avenue for participation. The revised policy to be considered at this meeting reverses some of the positive changes made in 2018 and negates the progress made to have a fair and transparent appointment methodology. The most significant modifications made to the 2018 policy are, one, no term limits. The proposed policy does not make any provision for term limits on any board, commission, et cetera. By eliminating the requirement that an individual may be appointed to a third term only if no other qualified candidate has applied, council is enabling dimes cease to be created and is crowding out new blood. Please do not misinterpret my concern. Experience is valuable and should be appreciated. However, six, eight, and 10 years is a significant amount of time for an individual to serve in the same capacity. Every organization needs different perspectives, points of views, and areas of expertise to grow and thrive. Indefinite or perhaps infinite tenures for any member is not in the best interest of McCandless and will not serve council or our citizens well. Two, sitting council members' appointments. One of the more significant changes made in 2018 was not allowing city council members to apply for or otherwise be appointed to any board in any capacity other than a liaison position. Deleting paragraph 11 in the current policy is a serious mistake. In my opinion, there are countless reasons why, but the major reasons are, A, council members already have a full-time position as a council member. The people of McCandless deserve council members to be focused on the issues that only council is able to handle. The people of McCandless deserve to have our elected officials available to us and the town staff without adding other responsibilities unnecessarily. B, any council member who applies for a position on any one of these entities will have an unfair advantage over any and all applicants regardless of the qualifications of the other candidates. C, council members participate in the selection process. This is the fox watching the hen house since there is no written requirement for council member applicants to recuse themselves from the process. D, it is difficult, if not impossible, for a council member to sit on a board, commission, or committee in an impartial manner. These entities need individuals who can make decisions as a member of that group and not as a council member. There are other concerns with the policy that exists currently in addition to the changes being proposed. For example, why does an incumbent member need to be invited by council to apply? If the incumbent will not be beyond any term limits, then these people should be given the same opportunity to apply, however, in the same manner as all other applicants. I have other concerns and questions which I would be happy to discuss with you at any time. Now, Mr. Schwend was good enough to send me a response, and he reminded me that paragraph 11 about the council, sitting council members, had been removed previously, which of course he's correct. But here's a chance to correct that ill-advised modification. And term limits, he said that it's still an open process. Well, theoretically, that's true, but I think we all have lived long enough to know that human nature does not work that way. We've been here before, and it did not serve us well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Three seconds to spare.
Please come forward with any other public comments on agenda items. Just state your name, please.
Barbara Richards. I'm doing the same thing. I wrote to the town manager and to all the council members that sent an email. So I'm just going to read that email. I am writing in response to the agenda item under new business, the resolution to remove the two-term clause for volunteers who serve on boards, commissions, committees, and authorities. I find the timing of this change in the appointment policy to be curious and concerning, but considering this action seems to have been created during the lame duck session of this council, it is not surprising. There have been several cases of amending this policy since 2016. It seems this is the third of 2025. I could be wrong, but it seems like we've been here a few times. Mr. Schwend, I wonder why your staff and the council liaisons you mentioned, but don't specify are recommending this now. It never came up before that any of the three reasons that were given were of concern to anyone. In fact, I believe in recent years that several appointments have been given to citizens who are clearly less qualified than other applicants. I also know of some McCandless residents who feel that they should not bother to apply for appointments because of an established partisan nomination process. I sincerely hope that as vacancies become available after January 5th, that McCandless will begin a fair and equitable process of nominating and appointing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment on agenda items? Please come forward. State your name.
Ellen Wright. So I have a series of comments. The calendar to only have, the proposed calendar only has one meeting in May and December. We tried that in May, and you know, I was bouncing up here all the time because there was just so much stuff on the agenda. And in years past, the second meeting, if the, if the second Monday falls on a holiday, then the meeting is the second and the third and not just pushing everything into one meeting. So that's my first comment that I'm concerned about that in the proposed calendar. I'm curious about why the time for the meetings to be changed from 7:00 to 7:30. 7:30 gives time to get home from work, to have dinner, and to get to council. Let's see. Oh, I also have concerns about the appointment resolution. As it reads, it says we're establishing an appointment policy, and we've had appointment policies in 2016, 2018, 2022. This was revised in March 10th of 2025, so I don't think we're establishing an appointment policy. I'm also concerned about getting rid of the term limits. I know that I believe last year we extended the deadline for the people to fill in the applications, and Winterfest is coming up. And perhaps during Winterfest to solicit applications for those boards. And let's see, oh, the effective date for the ordinance in letter D for the E. By, it just says in accordance with law, doesn't really say what McCandless's policy is that there's a post-enactment, there's a post-advertising, and 10 days later. And then that is a pretty big budget presentation. I haven't had time to go the whole way through it, but off the top here, is there any way, like when the checks come out each month, and maybe it's there and I just don't see it, but does it say? Because when I looked at the presentation, like it's Fund 400 or other things that I haven't had time to really look at, but I just wondered if there was any correlation. And at any point, and there aren't grants for it anymore, but I know CCAC has solar panels on their flat roof on CCA North, and I think we have a flat roof here. I wonder if anybody's considered solar for this. And the only reason I ask, I've noticed that my electric bill, you know, I'm very chintzy with my electric, and my electric bill's doubling for things I don't have any control over, like the supply charges. And if we're going, Pennsylvania is going to become the data center of the world, our electric will be going up. So if that's something that's been thought about. Professional services, I think we're spending more than what I see in the budget each month for professional services, and I just wondered if that's under different places in the budget. And let's see, oh, the capital improvements seems like a good idea to plan ahead, but I'm not seeing any documentation that goes with that, or maybe I just didn't look closely enough to see it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment on agenda items? Seeing none, we will continue on with the minutes from the October 27th meeting. We will previously email the council in your packets here. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Giorgi. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Continuing on to reports of committees, Public Safety Committee staffer.
Everybody, can everyone hear me? Awesome. October was a busy month for the police department. You can see nearly 1,000 calls. Items of note in this month's report, I always like to touch on training and a couple items here I led with were the K-9 team. And a few things they were, they participated in in October included Crisis Center North's on behalf, a Lowe's First Responder Appreciation Event where we got to engage the community quite a bit that afternoon in the Lowe's parking lot, and the K-9 team also attended St. Paul's, an afternoon preschool safety talk. Sticking with the topic of training, paragraph two there, we sent some detectives to sexual assault investigation training. Couple of our officers also attended a state police career. I see here in paragraph three, the K-9 team also assisted one of my detectives and my lieutenant in conducting multiple Halloween safety talks as we do annually at numerous preschools throughout the town. Also of note, thanks to Abby for organizing it. We were able to take a Peebles Elementary student to school in October during the Town of McCandless Adventure Day. So that was success, successful, and my understanding is the student loved it. Regarding social worker program, as you can see, there's an uptick this month over previous months. Social worker Frye reports that she had 48 individuals that she referred to different social working services. So that's an uptick over, I think, probably mid-30s or so we've been running each month. She also attended her share of training this past month in October. She attended a day conference on mental health strategies. It was hosted by the Commonwealth Charter Academy. She attended the Fifth Annual Human Trafficking Virtual Summit, which was hosted by the PA Office of Homeland Security, and she attended a statewide crisis intervention team conference hosted by Pennsylvania, the Commonwealth of. We had our monthly, where we turned in prescription narcotics. That number's always pretty significant here in the town. I think this month, what's it say, a total of 58 and a half pounds we turned over for destruction to the Pennsylvania Counter Drug Task Force. Also near the end of October, thank you to town council for swearing in two new officers, Connor DeBransky and Alex Edwards. They are currently in the middle of field training. It's approximately three-month program before they're released out onto their own in the wild. And finally, I like to wrap up with deer calls. So this time of year, you should expect, and we did have an uptick, 59 calls relating to deer, some of those crashes, I'm sure. Big Daddy Wildlife removed 21 carcasses in the month of October as well. I'm sure that uptick is partially attributed to the rut.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Seeing none. Continuing on to the fire marshal's report in your packet, Jeff, and we have our course here.
Yeah, I'd be glad to do some highlights. For the month of October, I had 23 fire marshal callouts. There were three fire investigations, all three happened to be structured fires. All three have been ruled accidental. That was just having to be a busy month for that. There were 29 fire prevention programs they taught at our schools totaling 2,015 children. It was, I think, a pretty good success with the schools. The kids seemed to have a lot of fun, and surprisingly, they're learning. So that's a good thing. One of the other big things been going on is the planning of the firefighter appreciation banquet, and that still goes on. And just a reminder, council, it is November 22nd, so that's coming up here very quickly. And again, that will be at the camp lot. But if anybody has any questions, feel free to email me, call me. As far as fire calls, if you recall, we are a month behind on fire call summaries. But for the month of September, it was actually a little slower month, and I kind of laugh at that. We had 133 calls for the month. That's, that was actually pretty slow for us. We average way more than that, but we had 110 calls in the town and 23 out-of-town responses for a total of 133. The top three calls, again, we respond to the motor vehicle accidents continuing to be our number one cause or number one types of calls we go to, followed by commercial fire alarms and then service calls. So that kind of summarizes my report. If anybody has any questions, we're happy to answer.
Seeing none. Thank you, sir. Okay, the building permit report is in your packets. Any questions? Can we direct it towards Mr. Schwend?
Just one thing, I didn't caught my eye in that report. There's a property that has a permit for an eight-car, 4,000-square-foot garage on a half-acre lot. And I was trying to figure, I didn't get into leads into the actual zone, it just, my, my home could have fit in this eight-car garage twice. And curious, like, was I taking a look at it? Was it a dead-end street? It's in a wooded area. I drove past the property today. Just curious that, that.
I looked at that too, and I looked it up, and I wondered if they owned the parcels all behind it. I wonder if it's been combined.
Maybe.
That's what I thought, because I looked at the same thing at the end of that call. It's second thought. And I can remember from years ago, there was a lot of consolidations back there, so I'm thinking that might be.
Which page? Which page?
On page two, the third.
Yeah, I don't want to fill it out by name, but.
Okay.
You see it.
I do believe that they have a second floor living space above that eight-car garage. It's on a single-family lot. I don't think it's the second dwelling on the lot. I think it's the only dwelling. So it's actually considered a single-family.
It's going to need a minimum address, because there is a property on it.
Yeah, if this is the property owner I'm thinking of, and I don't see the last name for the property owner on there. I do believe, we've been looking at that for quite a while now. He's had plans on the review for a little bit, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Schwend? Seeing none. Moving on to Liaison Report's personnel board, Mr. Wall.
It wasn't meeting.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Wall? Seeing none. Volunteer Firefighter Steering Committee, Mr. Hart. It appears there was no.
There was no meeting since the last, or last.
Okay, thank you for that. This time, is there any public comment on public safety? Seeing none. Continuing on to reports of facilities management, staff report, public works report is in your packet. Brad is here. Let me give us a brief rundown, please, sir.
Sure. Some highlights from this month. We're in full swing of our leaf cleanup collection. We finished the parking lot lights over at Heritage Center. All trucks have been winter, they're now winter-ready with the spreaders installed on them. We finished the bridge repair at Bestal Park, and we are now replacing the lights down there. That's about done on the bridge. And our biggest project of the month was the West Arcadia pipe and headwall replacement. Other than that, we continued with our grass cutting as much as possible. All of our hydro seating is done for the 25 paving areas, and we also painted the police entrance way downstairs.
Any questions for Brad? My only question, I'm sorry, Brad.
I just wanted to compliment you. I went down to Bestal and looked at the bridge, and I know that that had to be an intricate repair.
Yes, the, the, the guys that did that, top-notch.
Well done.
Just a little status update on leaves, because I know it's on everyone's mind. You know, everybody's worried that leaves will stick on their trees till December. You know, how are you? Are you in a normal time period to years past? You know, are there any issues or concerns of falling behind, any issues with winter weather, things that affect?
No, I don't believe there's any issues.
And obviously, you would address them if something changed.
Yeah, yeah, I think we're, I think we are right on track, and I think that a lot of leaves will probably fall tonight with it being so cold.
Thank you very much.
One of my neighbors this past weekend actually made a comment about how great the leaf pickup is, and you guys are doing a great job. So my neighbors very seldom come to me and say. Compliment. You did something right, Brad.
Perfect, fantastic.
Give Brad a little extra praise here too, because he doesn't give himself enough credit sometimes. So this is the first year that four leaf trucks are in service, running simultaneously. That four leaf trucks combined with a little bit of overtime permitted as the weather was nice has let us stay very ahead of the game. Brad runs a small construction crew, basically, with his group. If you've seen the pictures that he puts into his report, you know, these men are doing jobs that a lot of other public works departments would outsource, and they help save the town a significant amount of money. And I want to emphasize on top of that, they're skilled in what they do. Looking at that bridge repair and the work they did on that, I mean, it's just really good. You have a, you have a really talented team, and you're doing a great job.
Absolutely. I mean, the guys that I have, they are, they're very, very skilled.
I thought the temporary repair was excellent, and then you came along and blew that out of the water. You did a great job.
And way ahead of schedule too, which I was happy about, so.
And for the record, you saved the town probably $80,000 as far as the lights being put in the Heritage Cultural Center parking lot.
I'd also like to make a comment about MTSA was really happy that you're, you were able to accommodate them and they accommodated you on the swapping of some.
Yes, yes, that worked out very well.
For both parties. Thank you.
Sure thing.
As long as your head can fit out the door.
Thank you, sir, for all that you do for us and your crews.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, continuing on to Liaison Report's Environmental Advisor Committee, Mr. Giorgi.
Those meeting minutes are in your packet, and I'll also note that we held interviews this past week for about half of those who applied. And I'm always blown away at the pool of wonderful talent that there is in this town, and it'll make it a difficult choice, so. Keep you posted.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, Mr. Giorgi? Seeing none. Ad hoc tech committee, Mr. Wall. Appears there was no meeting. Okay, ad hoc stormwater management committee, we do have one coming up here in the month of December. So we'll report back to you then. At this time, is there any public comment on facilities management? Please come forward. State your name.
I too noticed the new lights at the Heritage Center, and you know, I'm not a big light fan, but it looks like they're pointing down, so that's cool. We had talked about like they could be turned off at some point. Is it possible to switch those new lights off? Or are they on continually? They're on a timer, because if there's no one there at the parking lot, do they need to be on?
We can look at the timer and adjust it as needed. I know that we did want to make sure it wasn't on a photo cell so that they weren't on all the time. We did want to have control over when they were on and off. So it's going to be a learning process. I understand your point, agree with it. From a financial standpoint and from an aesthetic standpoint, we shouldn't have them on if we don't need to.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks for your comment. Any other public comment on facilities management? Seeing none. Reports of the Service Committee, Liaison Reports, McCandless Township Sanitary, Mr. Casey.
Reports in your packet. I'm happy to entertain your questions.
Seeing none. McCandless Frank Park Ambulance Authority, again, Mr. Casey.
I'm real happy to report that they got a what it's called, not a grant, but they're working with the National Institute of Health, and may create a new line item for them, this two-year program where they're going to actually work with hospitals to go check out patients that that aren't really communicating. And they'll go to the house and do some kind of wellness check on them and report back. And it's pretty substantial. I hope it sticks, because it's a really hefty line item.
Any other questions for Mr. Casey? Seeing none. Northland Public Library, Mr. Giorgi.
Those meeting minutes are in your packet. Give me questions, let me know. They're still trying to iron out the issues with the generator and the fire pump. Hopefully, they will get that resolved. The ribbon cutting is still up in the air. We don't really have a finite date.
You think you're looking into December or January?
Well, I, there, I, we're looking at December. What am I going to do with Thanksgiving?
Look, just looking for it.
It was a race between if it was the airport or the library, but I think the airport would have been the one right now. Thank you for that update. At this time, are there any public comments on the Services Committee? Seeing none. That brings us to old business, and there is no old business. So we will jump into new business. And first up is the budget presentation by our finance director, Brittany Walker.
Good evening, council and members of the community. Thank you for joining us tonight. We appreciate your time and your continued commitment to keeping our town strong and moving in the right direction. Tonight's presentation, tonight's presentation priorities that shape it and the financial realities that we're planning for in the year ahead. Our goal is to be clear, transparent, and responsible with the resources entrusted to us. We want everyone to understand not only the numbers, but the reasoning behind them and the ways they support the services, safety, and the quality of life our residents expect. Before we get into the details, the next few slides simply will just outline the format for tonight's presentation, so everyone knows what to expect and how the information will be organized. So, next, on this slide, I just want to highlight that we are presenting a fully balanced budget. Our proposed general fund budget is $20,375,126. Every line has been structured to support essential services while keeping us financially steady for the year ahead. On the next slide, you'll see the adopted budget from the past two years, so we can get a quick sense of our trend line. We'll dig into the details of what is driving the details of the budget totals as the presentation moves forward. Okay. And then, for the 21st year in a row, we're holding study with no mileage change. The one adjustment we did make was to our realty tax revenue. We brought that number down to something more realistic and attainable based on current. We brought that number down to something more realistic and attainable based on current activity, just to keep the budget grounded and what we can truly expect. Okay. And to follow up on that, the only real notable change in our revenue budget this year is the correction to the realty transfer tax estimate. We'd much rather operate within conservative revenue projections than count on dollars that we may not, that may not come to fruition. So this adjustment keeps us on the safe side and better aligned with what we're actually seeing. As you can see from these graphs, our revenue production was consistent with the prior two years trends. This however, this year however, actual revenue came in lower than expected. It also included total revenue figures excluding the ARPA funding we are no longer receiving to give a clear picture of the underlying trends.
Brittany is kind enough to let me tag team this budget presentation with her too. So I may interject on a few of the different funds and I'll interject here on the realty transfer tax as well. We did make certain assumptions in the budget for 2025 at the end of last year. Two of those assumptions were number one, that earned income tax would outperform what it had done in the past. And also that realty transfer tax would outperform based on what we had heard and anticipated. We're going to be a few large properties that changed hands. And also the real estate market. As we know, that real estate market has calmed somewhat and the realty transfer tax did not perform as we had intended it to in twenty-five. Therefore, when you see a delta of three percent down in our, you know, budget for revenue for 2026. Remember that's not compared to actual, that's compared to what we had budgeted for twenty-five. So that's the reason why you see that difference. And as you can see from her slide before, where we come in as a projection of budget 2025. You'll see that realty transfer tax is only projected to bring in about seventy-two percent, seventy-five percent roughly of what we thought that it would.
Real quick, John, just, just to talk and not to get off topic here real quick, but just for people in the audience to understand, and this is on our website as well, the timeline of this. Everybody on council here had individual meetings with both John and Brittany to review this budget. We, as a council as a whole, have not seen it yet together to have discussion about it together. That's the purpose of today. Is a presentation from our finance director to council. So we are seeing it together. It's the first time we can talk about it together now in public for the first time. And then on Monday, November twenty-fourth, there will be a public hearing where comments can be formally made on this budget. Obviously, if you have comments in the meantime, after seeing this on our website or today, you're more than welcome to email any one of us with any questions or concerns. But today's presentation is a budget presentation to council. On Monday, November twenty-fourth, will be a public hearing regarding the budget and a vote will take place on December eighth. I just wanted to interject that so everybody in the crowd knows the process of what we're doing here today. Thank you. Sorry.
You're forgiven.
Yep. Okay, so we're going to now get into each actual budget. So we're going to start with budget four hundred. This is the town council. There's no real changes to four, to the four hundred budget items, except for a very minimal reduction to the strategic planning allocation, which is a very, very minimal that we went over.
Yeah, we have a firm budget number for that this year from consultants says last year we'd estimated higher. So we, we know what it'll cost for twenty-six.
All right. And for four oh one, the main adjustment here reflects moving the assistant manager's wages and benefits solely into this budget. Where before they were previously split across two budgets. So that is why it's showing a seven percent increase. So it looks a little higher, but as we go on, you'll see where the next budget goes down. So in four oh two, the change in this area again reflects the assistant manager's wages being removed from this department and put into four oh one. We did add additional cost for finance software to be implemented. We're still shopping around. We have not picked any software yet, but we have Joe, the IT guy involved and we're trying to pick the best software.
Want to emphasize why that's important. Watching Brittany work through this budget process with the current software we have is painful. It's not user friendly. It doesn't allow her to make easy user-friendly graphs. It does not allow me to get information that I need when I want to. We have to improve that.
How old is the software back?
We stopped being able to utilize the updates for it probably in two thousand sixteen.
It's a long time. Wow. Yeah, we're, we're due for an update.
So in other words, if you couldn't use the updates from sixteen, then this is probably two thousands.
And when we call to get support, we get, that's a great question. And then we never hear anything back. Our new accounts payable girl cannot print checks and we cannot get support to fix it.
So you'll see, we do know that there will be an implementation cost. Unfortunately, that's where a lot of these software platforms get you is with the implementation cost and then the annual fee recurs. The estimated implementation cost will be thirty thousand dollars for new software for this. The increase in estimated annual fee is going to be about seven thousand dollars. You can see that in these lines. Currently, we're paying about five to six thousand a year for our current platform and it's going to be about thirteen, twelve, thirteen thousand next year. During some portion of the year, once again, this is a budget as if everything takes place Jan one, which we know that it won't. So we projected high in our expenses and conservative in the revenues to make sure that we're showing you what I'm going to call the worst case scenario. If we spend every dollar from day one until the end of the year, that's what I'm painting the picture for you. That's not going to be what actually happens.
Right.
While we're speaking about things that will be different, in our four oh three tax collection department, our tax collector Judy Wagner, who's worked here since two thousand and eighteen, I believe, is going to retire in early twenty twenty-six. So the discussions that have taken place among the professional staff and the recommendation that we're going to make to town council is to outsource the real estate tax and the business privilege tax department. They in-house tax used to collect per capita for the school district that has come to an end as of last year. Currently, they only collect business privilege and real estate. Those two would be outsourced to third-party collectors, very similar to what all of neighbors of our similar size and around us do. We've had a discussion with the school district about this because as you know, we collect taxes for the school district also. And there is some portion of the wages and salaries for tax collection that the school district had reimbursed us on. One thing about this change is it does reflect substantial savings to the budget. Now that you see that we'll be able to perform all the tasks we have before for about a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars less than we had in the past. This change will need to be communicated very what they'll see when the tax bills would come out next year. The timing for the taxes would still all be the same. The school district and the town tax would be in the same envelope. However, you'd make your checks payable to two different entities. So the town tax will be clearly separate and the school district tax will be, will be in there also. Business privilege tax, there'll be no change to the way that it's collected. It'll just be printed on a different form and mailed to a different location. Happy to answer any questions that anybody has specifically on tax collection.
All right. Moving on to four oh six, citizen information. We did have an increase in the supplies line item. This is due to adding a third town crier publication to further enhance our community outreach. We felt it was a good way to spend a little bit of money to get that out there. Four oh nine, really, this budget was pretty straightforward. Nothing really notable in there. Hadn't changed much from the prior year. Moving on to four ten, it's always a fun one. The budget increase in the police department reflects several factors. A reduction in the tier requirements for the salary steps. The standard three percent raise negotiated in the CBA agreement. A health insurance increase and the addition of social worker expenses. So as we've implemented the social worker program, she needs some additional resources in order to make it successful. So we've allotted her some extra funds to do that. So that is where that increase comes from. Four eleven.
Four eleven, this is our fire budget. And as you can see, there's going to be a couple of slides here because this is up for a point of discussion as the proposal for next year's fire service budget is different than the current structure. So the page you see in front of you is a four eleven fire under the current situation. You'd see that would yield a four percent increase. That increase does include an, a increase in contributions to the volunteer fire departments. I think this year they received about a hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Next year, we're proposing that each receives two hundred thousand. So it's about five to six percent increase. That'll help cover their rising costs. And as we know and we see in our own budget, the cost to do business has gone up over time. And I think that's, that's an important amount of money to figure in. The alternate budget that we're going to show you includes recommendations that not only have we received from the fire services study that was completed a few years before I started. But we've had very productive meetings with our steering committee. And you know, Mr. Hart is the representative to the steering committee. He's been in there for these where we have a chief and a president from each one of the fire departments get together and we're trying to figure out how to move forward. And one of the ways that we have talked about moving forward is with standardization of bylaws and SOGs. But another conversation came about, which is, you know, how can we continue to aid in the reduction of response times to emergency incidents in the town as well as provide the needed administrative and leadership that are, that our groups need. Because remember, these folks have full-time jobs and they're working on this fire department part-time. So this budget proposed includes two major changes. One is the introduction of a paid fire chief for a townwide position. And the other includes payments for two part-time personnel to be hired in order to supplement the fire services. As you see, the proposed budget for twenty-six on this structure is about three hundred and seven thousand dollars. So you can see that increase. That number you see is for a chief to be hired near the end of quarter one, beginning of quarter two, which would be about the same time that the bylaws and SOG standardization process should be completed. And then it accounts for two part-time firemen to cover daylight fire calls Monday through Friday for quarter four of twenty twenty-six. So it's a gradual step-by-step introduction of this system. Whether we a hundred percent end up there in that timeframe, I don't know the answer to that yet. As we work with the steering committee, that's going to be important. Getting the input and the, you know, buy-in from each one of the departments. And as they would help collaborate with us in order to pick whoever this leader would be. And in order to make sure that we implement this right is very, very important. What I want to do is have it in the budget. So we're able to do so if we need to. As you notice, some of our towns around us are ahead of the game on this. Ross has already put out an ad for a paid fire chief for next year. And I believe some other towns may be doing that as well. So we need to give our volunteers everything that they possibly could need in order to be successful. And we think this is a great step for them. Happy to answer any questions anybody has about that at this time.
Certainly, there are a lot of pickings that still need to be worked out.
Absolutely.
So we're just looking at this from a let's say a ten thousand fifty.
Yeah, the idea is to have the numbers available and to have the blessing through the budget in order to proceed if that ends up being the path that we need to go down.
Okay. And and the current volunteers will also be eligible to be part-time.
None of the criteria for any of these positions have been established, but the answer is yes. Depending on what those criteria are, there'd be a number of our current volunteers who'd be eligible.
I think Mr. Schwinn's trying to say, you know, we have a problem coming. We're working through that solution to get there, but before we can even get there, we need to make sure we put money in a budget for it in case it comes. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, that's what you're really asking for. You're not asking us to solve the problem yet, but you're asking us
To be prepared.
Funding to be prepared for.
We need to be prepared. Yeah, we have great, the steering committee's done great. Matt's in the audience today. He participates in it regularly with us. They really are thoughtful and all of them care about delivering quality fire service to the town. So I know as we keep having conversations, we're going to get to a good point. This just is a tool in the toolbox to be able to do it if we need to.
Any other questions for Mr. Schwinn on this one?
Let's move on.
All right. For the ambulance authority, this one is very straightforward. We increased our contributions for twenty twenty-six to a hundred and twenty-eight thousand from a hundred and ten thousand in the prior years. For thirteen, code enforcement. Some expenses were moved from this budget to, to budget four fourteen to correct prior year's misallocations. Additionally, last year included a vehicle purchase and third-party inspection costs. Inspector costs, which are not part of this year's budget. These are the main differences. Or fourteen, planning and zoning. In four fourteen, the major difference is they implemented, implemented new software. That's the main factor driving this increase. Four nineteen remains steady with a slight increase for their workers' compensation premiums. Four twenty-six, the most significant change in this budget is the removal of the glass dumpster charges as waste management has resumed glass recycling through curbside pickup. All right. Four thirty, public works. The largest variance is in salaries. This appears in budget four thirty as all salaries for public works, with the exception of the mechanics, are now consolidated here. Rather than being spread across multiple budgets as in prior years. So with that being said, you're going to see a big increase in public works, but as we go through the next couple of budgets, you're going to see where the salaries have been removed and they came out of following budgets.
Give a quick follow-up to that. One of Brittany's accomplishments this year was transitioning us from using our Accufund hand payroll software to ADP payroll software. She really modernized the payroll process. Doing that saved her staff a lot of time by being able to make that move. One of the things that ADP did differently than we did in our old system was how they classify people's wages. You know, we had spread across, you know, multiple different areas, the public works wages. We did it with police with some overtime into community celebrations, parks, et cetera, things that they needed. But the ADP system really wants you to put those together into one group. That's why you'll see that we moved these wages to certain spots that they did. Plus the way we were doing it in the past, there wasn't necessarily rhyme or reason to it. You try to allocate the wage. You know, Brad's, Brad's software isn't actually marking down how many hours they spent on a storm pipe versus how many hours they spent on leaf collection. It's, you know, the payroll for the day. So as you see these next lines, we'll move forward with that.
All right. Snow and ice control. The largest increase in this budget is for salt purchases, addressing prior year shortages. We've also added an additional snow route for more efficient road clearing. For thirty, four thirty-three and four thirty-six, I'll just kind of lump these two together. The major adjustment to the next two budgets were basically moving wages into four thirty. That was the only thing really notable about these two. Four thirty-seven, repairs of vehicles and machines. Vehicle repair costs have decreased being that our fleet is newer and requires less maintenance. So the mechanics are spending less time and less money repairing the vehicles since they're newer.
There were a few line items in here also that just seemed to be artificially higher than they need. I don't want to say artificially higher than they need to be. There were a few that I think had been over budgeted. We just needed to get those back in line with what prior year's trends were. You'd notice we do keep the mechanics in their own line for personnel services here though, because we do bill out those hours to other agencies. So we did want to make sure that we keep those mechanics. We were able to make a code separate for this.
Yes, because the mechanics only work in the mechanics division.
Yeah, their job never changes. They have their own division.
Are we capturing all our expenses?
Are we capturing all our expenses? Do we farm them from them up?
For mechanics?
Yes.
And we're farming out to just the ambulance.
Ambulance authority pays us for work that we do on their ambulance.
Yeah, but that's who we farm that on.
Correct, yes. But with their fleet also being newer, we haven't had many repairs for them either this year. All right, four thirty eight. This budget remained largely unchanged. Of the twenty seven hundred dollar decrease, two thousand of it was transferred out of this account into four thirty three for line striping work. So as we went through the budget, we tried to see if there was anything in the line items that would be better allocated elsewhere. So there was some money in here for line striping, so we put it in four thirty three where it actually should live. All right, four forty six, detention facility maintenance. In the four forty six budget decreased as public works has been caught up upon maintenance. However, you'll still see detention facility maintenance reflected in the capital improvements budget. So. Four fifty one. There's nothing significant in this budget, but some minor adjustments to the daily operating supplies. Four fifty four, parks. The major change in this budget included adding the full time parks and recreation director's salary and benefits. Previously, her salary was split across two budgets. Additionally, the Heritage Center will receive new parking lot lights and several parks will get new benches. And that's also included in the parks budget. Northland Library's municipal support is calculated using a formula based upon circulation. This year, we had a four percent increase in our contribution from prior years. Fourth, community director salary out of this budget, as mentioned in the previous slide, and reallocated funds to enhance existing community events and support additional ones. All right, now we're going to move to CIP and John's going to answer some questions on this. Sorry, four ninety one, I forgot about those ones.
Four ninety one and four ninety two are easy to forget.
They really are. They're very, very on. So four ninety one, the budget remains steady, and this is exactly where we intended to be on this one. And four ninety two, there's no changes to report in this budget. It basically remains consistent with prior years. Exactly the same. Good thing I had to see IP because that's everybody's favorite, right?
Okay, so we'll cover the capital improvement fund. Sorry about how small this is, but there's a lot of information to fit on one page. We do have a five year projection for this long term budget. You can see where we've been in budget and actuals in the past also. Of note, revenues, your revenues that you see in the CIP budget are either interest earnings or grants that we know we've already received. Okay? So when you see that revenue number small and the expenditure number high, we've included under the expenditures all the projects that we would like to complete if additional grant funding is awarded. You're looking at the worst case scenario. You're looking at we get zero grant dollars in and we choose to do every project, which we know is not what would happen. So I'm painting you the worst possible picture.
And I just want to point, that's not been our past practice. We've normally been budgeting possible grant revenues and this time we've decided to not include that. I just want to point that out. Thank you.
Yeah, so this is, this is a different way to do this. And as you'll notice, Brittany and I did approach this a little bit differently than we have in the past. Hopefully you like it. We've tried to simplify and modernize the way that some of the numbers were presented and make them, you know, very, very accurate. Let's dive into a few of the proposed expenses. You can see what we had planned in twenty twenty five. Some of them were completed, some of them will carry over from year to year. And then we project out. I don't want to say that some of those projections are placeholders necessarily, but I don't know what those future projects are. But I know that, you know, based on priorities of council sidewalks, connectivity, as you can see in here, is important. The fact that we only have fifty thousand dollars in the budget right now for this is due to that being what we know a match would be to a grant for the Grubbs Road Sidewalk Connect. So you can see a few of these projects that we're going to talk about. One, Grubbs Road Sidewalk. Number two, Engamar, connecting from Highland and Harmony all the way up to Engamar proper. And then the last would be Blazer Drive. Abby's worked diligently on a few grant applications in order to improve connectivity and a Blazer Drive sidewalk continuation all the way over to the Starbucks is one of the grant applications we applied for too. I think that was the long term one, right? That was the one that we'd know about in twenty seven and we'd get the money in twenty nine. It was like a million bucks. So that's why we felt comfortable spreading that two fifty out over the next few years as if either one of those two grants come in, either Engamar or the Blazer Drive project. There'll be some money to be spent. You can see that under Town Hall Building Improvements, we have generator project that the bids are due on later this week. That number generator replacement and electrical, the total is three hundred and ninety thousand. So we'll have to correct that for the budget hearing for next week. In the twenty twenty five portion, we should be estimating two hundred thousand spent and then the balance spent at the beginning of twenty six. By the time somebody procures a generator and actually completes the work, we know we're going to be into the first quarter of twenty six. Flooring projects still to be completed. Flooring includes both the administrative floor and the police department floor, removing and replacing all of the carpet tile and flooring. Future projects for next year include security and modernization to the front lobby. We need to harden our front lobby and make it a little bit more secure for our friends who have to come to the front counter. We also need to modernize it. We're, we're kind of stuck in the past out there and we should have a town hall that's warm and welcoming. That also does include a grant application we put in with Allegheny County for ADA bathroom improvements to the two restroom facilities out here in the front also. That's through, like I said, through the county, through the CDBG money. That should be a project that we get awarded. As you can see, one thing I wanted to include, and Brittany and I talked about this and we talked about it as we've met with council in the individual sessions, including the engineering amount that is projected by Gateway for each of these projects. I want to show you and everybody how much money we do spend on our engineering. Our engineers are very valuable, but they do come at a high price. And that's all the stuff I just told you. Okay, we'll do this five year forecast for our next section. We have public works, general administration, large equipment. I'll let you look at the numbers for a moment, and then there's some descriptions on the slides that are after this. Keeping up with our fleet, we did price out to replace. You know, we added one new leaf truck this year. We have the other three leaf trucks on a schedule to be replaced over the next three years. We have two grant applications currently out and pending for leaf truck replacement. Future equipment includes a replacement of a fifteen year old plus backhoe that could either be replaced with a backhoe or replaced with a smaller loader to assist during storm cleanup. And then we will be caught up with our ten ton dump trucks. We got behind due to COVID and ordering problems. There were supply chain issues for a number of years. And we had a little backlog that we caught up on this year. Once we have two more trucks in the fleet for next year, we should be on a regular rotating basis. You'll see the snow plows and hitches needed for those also. License plate reading cameras under traffic control devices. We did receive a fifty thousand dollar grant this year that we have and that we're going to use to install about sixty thousand dollars worth of equipment. We have applied for another grant for next year and we know that we need to keep up on that. It's important to get the main intersections headed into and out of town on that system. License plate reading cameras, while it may feel like Big Brother, are a great idea for our law enforcement friends to be able to track types of crime that we do not want to have occur in this town. You know, we have a number of schools, we have a number of other places that may unfortunately at one time or another, you know, attract criminals and being able to follow them and where they go through this is, is one of the priorities that I think we need to continue with. Green light go funding, we know that we have that award. It's going to be spent partially this year and next year. That's for six intersection improvements. You'll see the engineering numbers underneath that. Stormwater drainage improvements, seventy five thousand dollars penciled in for various locations. We know as the year goes on, we find problems that need to be fixed. That's a placeholder. We do have a one million dollar grant application in for the Oak Ridge Culvert Rehabilitation Project. If that's awarded, it'll be spent between twenty twenty six and twenty twenty seven. There's a ten percent match on that. So you can see it's a one point one million dollar total. Future projects, we do have a number of situations that we're starting to encounter in town that have been long term stormwater management issues that have not been addressed. And the Ad Hoc Stormwater Committee has done a great job with pointing out what these are, meeting with residents, talking about ways to fix them. The problem, I don't want to call it a problem, but the conundrum is they're high cost projects for, you know, what some people might consider smaller value results. But they're issues that we have owned and created over time that we need to address. So as you can see, as I projected out into twenty thirty, spending a significant amount of money on that each year in order to keep up and maintain those situations. Resurfacing reconstruction of town roads included one point six million dollars towards resurfacing this year in twenty six. Our budget for this year was around one four, and I think we got an excellent deal with Youngblood. Our contractor did a fantastic job and they were in and out of here quickly. There's also another eighty seven thousand dollars we put in towards a crack ceiling program to help improve the longevity of the roads and also line striping program. We've had a number of folks talk about crosswalks. We've had people ask about the yellow lines and stop bars that we started to paint in town. And this will allow us to continue to expand upon that and make sure that we get some additional lines out there in the public too. Stormwater management and flood control. This is an area that, you know, we have a hundred and eighty thousand into the budget for next year. We do use a third party contractor. We put out an RFP at the beginning of the year for time materials so that we can get somebody with some bigger equipment in to help us on these large pond repairs. The reason why you'll see no projects, let's go down to the line VMP, future projects. You know, no longer are we concerned with PRPs anymore. Apparently we're concerned with volume management according to the new directives from the state. We know that in twenty twenty six, we'll need to do a study and talk about our volume management program. Luckily, town council, the prior council, unless it was this council, and I'm not sure which one to give credit to, but I'll give credit to somebody, did have Gateway map the entire town to see where these volume situations would be. We know what our storm shed watersheds are, so a significant amount of that engineering work has already been done. Then we know, starting in twenty seven, we're going to have to, you know, get the boots to the ground and start getting some of these projects completed. That's why you'll see future projects under various locations, twenty seven through thirty. And here are some pictures to highlight all of the details that I just gave you, including about the grants and awards. That's a picture of the Blazer Drive Culvert as it was under construction. Hopefully, we'll be constructing an Oak Ridge Culvert this year. And a little bit of discussion about the town road resurfacing and reconstruction program. As we move into our parks and recreation area, we do have our public works working on the Walpark Culvert replacement. I think that's underway now. Twenty twenty six's budget, we do have a grant application in for security cameras for both Walpark and for Vestal in order to be able to keep our eyes, you know, we have, we have great assets here when it comes to our parks. But we also have them in areas that sometimes are not easy to monitor at all times. So getting a few cameras would be great. We know what we're going to spend on our parks and master or Parks and Trail Master feasibility study. And you'll see out in twenty twenty nine, we put another hundred and twenty thousand dollars because that'll be a future comprehensive plan. Your ten year comp plan will be expired in twenty nine and we'll have to perform another one. Devlin Park and Walpark have various improvements. Walpark is for additional paving and resurfacing of the parking lot in that area. Vestal, various needed improvements to fencing, restrooms, et cetera. Playground apparatus and construction materials with penciled in money for those for both parks. And then also have money designated towards Pontiac Park, which I think will be one of the areas that our Parks and Rec Study is going to suggest that we move forward with turning that former fill site into a new, into a new park. Since we don't know, you know, a hundred percent what the recommendations from this park study will be or what the priorities out of that study will be, you know, there's, there's not a lot of that included in twenty six. I think that the idea is to finish the study properly, apply for grants that will be eligible for once that study's complete and then perform that work in following years. So you'll see the projected budget twenty seven through thirty change and increase after we know what our priorities are coming up in twenty twenty six.
Okay, and then moving on to our transportation district fund. This remains very consistent. We've decided to continue funding our capital improvements fund with one hundred and twenty four thousand, seven hundred dollars again this year. Our assessment district fund, there's no changes to report in this budget. It remains consistent with prior years. And our state highway fund is supported by liquid fuels and state turnback allocations. These funds are then used to support our road program. And then the last slide just also goes over the budget review and approval process that Jason had mentioned at the beginning of the presentation. And that is it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Sorry it was so long guys.
Okay. Like I said, we will see that in a public hearing here in the next meeting. Next item up under new business is actually concerning the rich person. Eco Village partial bond release, these are housekeeping items. The engineer has reviewed this and recommended a number of reduction in bond. If somebody willing to make that motion.
Mentioned the approved partial bond release number seven in the Reg. Carson Eco Village. Performance bond in the amount of ninety nine thousand, seven dollars and seventy eight cents. For the town engineers review letter dated October twenty second, two thousand twenty five.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item up for a resolution is the changing of the appointment policy for boards and commissions. As we presented from our management about the removal of a two term restriction on this. We'll need a motion and then if there's further discussion, we can talk about it after. Is somebody willing to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash one six. A resolution will town council, the town of McAlves, Allegheny County Council of Minutes, establishing an appointment policy for boards, commissions and specialists committee.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, my Mr. Hart. Any further discussion on this?
I, I would like to see the ability for council members to be on committees to be with us. I don't, I think we have enough qualified residents in our community that we do not need to have council be on.
We don't have, we don't have council on any of these cases now.
No.
Kim Zachary.
Take it out of the, of the bridge.
She wanted to put somebody on the ambulance board, but she's gone and there's no.
I don't see a need for council to be on that.
I don't disagree with you.
So we'll need a amendment to that motion to include that.
I will make.
I, I agree to.
So the amendment was as discussed to remove council members from being able to serve on these boards, authorities and committees. Okay, both have agreed to that. Any other further discussion on this matter? Seeing one, all those in favor, please indicate by aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Next up is discussion authorization to advertise regarding first ease bike ordinance. We saw this come around. I'm sorry, I apologize there. First one, sorry peoples. This reset device. I crossed one off too early. This is a resolution allowing peoples to apply for a LSA grant an amount of one million dollars for the renovation and expansion of the existing fire station. So we've seen these before. They've come in. They need us to make this resolution in order to apply. Is there a motion, Mr. Hart?
Motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty five F seventeen, regarding the application to Commonwealth Finance Authority for the local share account grant on behalf of peoples, district volunteer fire company. on behalf of People's District Volunteer Fire Company in the amount of one million dollars for the renovation expansion of the existing fire station.
Second, there's been a motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Good luck.
Jason, if I could, just to step back to that amendment for the appointment policy. I want to make sure I put in exactly what you want. The bullet point eleven that Ms. Caliendo had brought up in the past. Read, unless otherwise specifically stated by a board's governing documents that a council member must hold a position, all authorities, boards, and commissions shall be resident positions not available to council members unless no qualified resident applies. Council members may only hold a position on an advisory committee of a temporary or ad hoc nature or upon resignation, continue to hold a position until replaced. Is that the verbiage that you had intended for me to add?
Well, I know in the past, we've had to extend the deadline for applications and we didn't have. So I, I wouldn't want to put council in. I'd rather have an extension of the, of the application deadline before council would go in.
So why don't I just strike the unless no qualified applicant applies and we'll leave the rest of it as stated? And then that way, it just truly eliminates it altogether. Unless required by
Correct.
a board's governing documents or that a council member's on a temporary or ad hoc nature committee.
That's correct. That's what we agreed to.
Okay, yes, I just wanted to make sure while we're all in the room together that that's.
Voted on in the past. Thank you. Next up was the e-bike ordinance. We saw a first round of this at the previous meeting. And understand, this is just the motion to authorize administration to advertise for this.
I made the motion to authorize the advertisement for those e-bike ordinance number fifteen-sixty.
There's been a motion to advertise, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Giorgetti, any?
I think need clarification in this ordinance. Briefly of John, but a couple things, including the age of requiring a helmet. I looked up Allegheny County Park and their requirement for helmet is for individuals under twelve years of age. If you think it's young. But I think ours, which is our, it's eighteen or twenty.
Under the age of twenty-one must wear a helmet at all times.
I think. Yeah, I'm not sure that that would be enforceable. And also, I think we need to distinguish in this ordinance the, the various classes of these e-bikes. For example, class three can get a range of twenty-eight miles per hour, which I don't want to see allowed on our park grounds or technicals. Even though we have in the ordinance up to fifteen miles per hour, I think we all know if somebody has a vehicle that can go faster.
We could expand the definition under the definition of e-bike. It does talk about operable pedals and capable speed not more than twenty miles per hour. If you want to see us increase the definitions, we could do that too.
Yeah, because I think if we need to, if this is going to be enforceable, then it needs to be clear on what each, what these vehicles are. And these class three vehicle bikes, I don't think what we have in mind here, but those, those vehicles can go very fast. They're nearly.
My, my concern with e-bikes is you're seeing them anywhere in and out of traffic. You know, they're riding on the roads. Are they a bicycle? Are they a motorcycle? You know, I think we need to establish.
Just remember, we can't regulate our Pennsylvania roadways. This is just for our parks and town properties. So that's a state matter. Yeah, I just say that for the crowd to understand this as well. We can't write regulations for roadways and.
But I think everybody on council here will agree that there is, there is an inherent danger.
Definitely.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So, okay, there has been a motion, there has been a second, there was discussion. Is there any additional? Then at this time, can we have a vote? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. The next item up is the town council meeting dates. This again is a housekeeping item. We did say, Mr. Schwend did set out a change in time and a few date differences that we experienced. But we do see this every year to set the schedule for next year. Is there a motion?
I like a motion. Motion to approve the town council meeting dates and times for twenty twenty-six.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hart, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. At this time, are there any public non-agenda comments? Please come forward, stay true.
Ellen, right? Where in the budget, I must, must understood it. When I look, I saw professional services are at many different places. What, what's the number for the engineers? What's the number for the attorneys?
It, it's, you know, I don't have it in front of me right now.
Okay, because I, maybe I missed it, but I'm not, I'm seeing the main category, but I'm not seeing the subcategory that says this number is engineer, this number is attorneys. It's, and maybe I need to go back and read the cover pages, which I haven't had time to do, but I'm not seeing where those things are. The generator, there's a generator for town hall in case the power goes out, is that what that is?
Correct, yes, both town hall and public works.
All right, this whole license plate reader, adamantly against it, adamantly. What's the policy? How long is that data stored for? Who has access to it? Did council approve the grant before it was, went out? There's no policy that's governing these license plate readers. Is AI going to take over reading the license plate readers? Will AI also be monitoring the cameras? There's no policy governing what's being done with these things. And without a policy, there needs to be a policy. And then the calendar that's being, to be sent out. I looked in the town crier and read it upside down, sideways. I saw nothing about the tree program. I don't know how, when we have this wonderful tree program happening, how it didn't make the town crier. Is the tree program going to be one of the monthly items that's to go out in the calendar for twenty twenty-six? So. And it's certainly, the trees certainly fit in well with the hundred and seventy-fifth celebration because you have roots, the past rooted in the past. You have the trees growing and showing the legacy for the future. You know, what, what better way to celebrate McCandless's past and future through the tree program? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other public non-agenda comments? Seeing none, we will adjourn into executive session, both personnel and legal matters. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some of.
In a second, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everybody.